If you want, I'm gonna go ahead and get started. Here my call to order, the city of Harpsville, South Carolina, public hearing and regular city council meeting for Tuesday, April eleventh to order. We've got a long agenda ahead of us, so if you would mind, Councilman Matt, would you kick us off with the invitation, by my pledge?
Yes. Yes, ma'am. Most of all in every aspect, uh, we got, um, fathers once more again, me, and home service coming to this building. In these hall halls to do business of the city of Harpsville that we all love so much. Lord, we ask you now to take control over the principalities and powers and spiritual weakness in high places that is running rampant over the world. Lord, government can't do it alone. Police enforcement can't do it alone. We have to have your hand, God, to move on the people's heart and drive out the evil that has been settling. Lord, we ask you now, we thank you, God, for the protection that you've given the city of Harpsville. Father, we pray that you would go into the war-torn areas of the world. Father, we pray that you would go and visit every city and with the people and the gun violence that has gone through. God, we can only do so much and we could never do what you do. So, Lord, we ask you now to come in and let your hand move through the hearts and minds of the people. In the name of your son, Jesus Christ, we do pray. Amen.
Amen. I beg with this to declare the United States of America and to the Republic of Canada, one nation, under God, universal, without any doubt.
Does anyone want to motion to waive the reading of the, uh, reading and approval of the minutes for March fourth debate? Do we wanna go through them?
Certainly.
Got a motion in the second, all is in favor of waiving the reading and approving the minutes of the last meeting. Please indicate if you have a sign up.
Aye.
Any votes? The ayes have it. And moving on to presentations, luckily, we only have nine tonight. So, we'll get started. You want me to read these line by line or do the quick version?
It's an option.
It's an option, okay. Got one vote. Is anyone here to accept the proclamation for sexual assault awareness month? Hey, please go forward if you would.
It's my honor to present this proclamation to you. Whereas sexual assault affects adults and children in the PD region, not only its victim survivors, but also its family members, loved ones, friends, neighbors, or coworkers of the victim. And whereas the twenty twenty-three observance of sexual assault awareness month encourages people to learn more about sexual violence and its prevention, and how to help survivors heal from this personal violation. Now, therefore, I, Casey Hancock, mayor of the city of Harpsville, the state of South Carolina, do hereby proclaim the month of April, twenty twenty-three, as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in the city of Harpsville, and encourage all the citizens to work together to prevent sexual assault and ensure a life free from harm for the residents of Harpsville.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Yep, absolutely. It's just a little stack. Yes, okay. Another very heavy, very important proclamation here. For Child Abuse Prevention Month. Whereas South Carolina's one point one million children residing in the communities across our state, including fourteen thousand six hundred and sixty-two in Darlington County, are our most valuable resource and will shape the future of our great state. And whereas childhood trauma, including abuse and neglect, is a serious problem affecting every segment of our community, and finding a solution requires input and action from everyone. And whereas in fiscal year twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one, there were two hundred and four children in Darlington County in substantiated cases of abuse, abuse and neglect. Now, therefore, I, Casey Hancock, mayor of the city of Harpsville, South Carolina, hereby proclaim April twenty twenty-three, Child Abuse Pre-Pre-Prevention Month, and encourage all citizens to dedicate themselves to protecting the quality of life for all families and children. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Quick photo op. Get yours too. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Congenital diaphragmatic hernia awareness day? Do we have anyone here representing? T. Ball, well, I'll just read it real quick. Yep. Whereas one in every two, two thousand five hundred pregnancies are diagnosed with a congenital diaphragmatic hernia, also CDH, known as CDH. Congenital diaphragmatic hernias occurs when a baby's diaphragm fails to fully form, allowing abdominal organs into the chest cavity and preventing lung growth. And whereas since two thousand, it's estimated that over seven hundred thousand babies have been born with this condition, with only fifty percent of those babies surviving, while sixteen hundred babies are born with CDH in the United States each year. And whereas raising awareness of this congenital defect will help bring about acceptance and support for those suffering with it, and will help advocate for urgently, urgently needed medical research and advances. Now, therefore, I, Casey Hancock, mayor of the city of Harpsville, and the state of South Carolina, do hereby proclaim April nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, as Congenital Diaphragmatic Hernia Awareness Day. And as mayor of Harpsville, I call upon the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses and schools in the city of Harpsville to commit our community to learn more about CDH and support those who are affected. Thank you, ma'am. Next up, we have Autism Awareness Month. Do we have anyone here from the Darlington County organization? No? Okay. Whereas autism spectrum disorder is a developmental disability that can cause social communication and behavioral challenges. People with ASD make communicate, interact, behave, and learn in ways that are different from typical people. And whereas a diagnosis of ASD now includes several conditions that used to be diagnosed separately, such as autism disorder, pervasive developmental disorder, not only what specified in Asperger's syndrome, these conditions are now called autism spectrum disorder or ASD. And whereas during the month of April, we strive to promote autism awareness, acceptance, inclusion, and self-determination for all, and ensure that each person with ASD is provided an opportunity to achieve the highest possible quality of life. Now, therefore, I, Casey Hancock, mayor of the city of Harpsville, the state of South Carolina, do hereby proclaim April twenty twenty-three as Autism Awareness Month in Harpsville, South Carolina, and encourage our citizens to raise awareness and acceptance for children and adults who are on the autism spectrum. Do we have anyone here for Mental Health Awareness Month? Okay. Important one for me. Whereas mental health is an essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, and whereas all Americans experience times of difficulty and stress in their lives, and whereas prevention is an effective way to reduce the burden of mental health conditions. And whereas each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizens shares the burden of mental health problems and has a responsibility to promote mental wellness and support prevention efforts. Now, therefore, I, Casey Hancock, mayor of the city of Harpsville, and the state of South Carolina, do hereby proclaim May two to, two thousand twenty-three as Mental Health Awareness Month, and I call upon the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses and schools in Harpsville to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, the steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health, and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health conditions. Donate Life? Anyone here for the Donate Life Month? All right. Whereas one of the most meaningful gifts that a human being can bestow on another is the gift of life through organ, eye, and tissue donation. And whereas more than a hundred and four thousand children and adults await life-saving transplants, of which more than fifteen hundred are in South Carolina right now. And whereas the decision to become an organ donor can save up to eight lives, and tissue donation can enhance many more, men, women, and children who depend on the generosity and sacrifice of others to receive a second chance at life. Now, therefore, I, Casey Hancock, mayor of the city of Harpsville, South Carolina, hereby proclaim April twenty twenty-three as Donate Life Month. How about Fair Housing Month? Anyone here to accept the Fair Housing Month proclamation? Okay. Okay. Accept it. Ourselves. Oh, Ms. Matt, would you like to present this one?
Yeah.
Oh, God. All right. Whereas every year, not, not, this isn't important, oh, no, don't misconstrue. Whereas every year, the housing urban development proclaims the month of April as Fair Housing Month to commemorate the anniversary and the passage of the Fair Housing Act in nineteen sixty-eight. And whereas the state of South Carolina enacted the South Carolina Fair Housing, Fair Housing Law in nineteen eighty-nine, which guarantees the right of every person to live where they choose, regardless of their race, color, national origin, sex, religion, familial status, or disability. And whereas the city of Harpsville rejects discrimination on the basis of race, religion, color, sex, national origin, disability, and/or familial status in the sale, rental, or provision of other housing services. Now, therefore, I, Casey Hancock, mayor of the city of Harpsville, do proclaim the month of April twenty twenty-three as Fair Housing Month, and urge all citizens to recognize and participate in this observance.
That's the requirement of the Fair Housing Law. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
My pleasure. Children's Museum Week? All right, we do have somebody in this one.
Thank you so much. Thank you. It's my honor to present this proclamation to you. Whereas children's museums have an essential role in the development of our future citizens, employers, decision-makers, and innovators. And whereas South Carolina's children's museums positively impact local tourism, adding an important element to the city's tourist attraction offerings for families and young children. And whereas children's museums encourage their guests to develop their critical and creative thinking skills, inspire career exploration, and workforce readiness that are integral to their future success. Now, therefore, I, Casey Hancock, mayor of the city of Harpsville, do hereby proclaim April first through seventh, twenty twenty-three, as Children's Museum Week, and encourage all citizens to visit, support, and share the joy of learning and adventure in Harpsville, as well as our state's children's museums.
Thank you very much. Especially, thanks. Now, we're further moving on. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate all the work you do. And finally, fifty-fourth Professional Municipal Clerk's Week. All right. All right. Good. It is my honor to recognize and honor the valuable contributions that municipal clerks make to cities and towns in South Carolina. Whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk is a time-honored and vital part of local government that exists in the world and is the oldest office among public servants. And whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk provides a professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels, and serves as the information center and functions of local government and community, and helps me hold my life together. And whereas municipal clerks get their professional training from the South Carolina Municipal Finance Office and Clerk's Treasures Association, and a field organization of MASC. Now, therefore, I, Casey Hancock, mayor of the city of Harpsville, and the state of South Carolina, do hereby proudly proclaim the week of April thirtieth through May sixth as Fifty-fourth Professional Municipal Clerk's Week, and to recognize and honor the valuable contributions that our city clerk, Sharon Skipper, and deputy city clerk Andrea DeVito's Grinchall, made to our city. If you could all join me in a round of applause. And I mean, if, if you wanna know what's going on, do not call me. I'm just gonna call them. We appreciate all the hard work that you do. You're very welcome. And also, let's just go ahead and proclaim April Proclamation Month while we're at it. All right. On to the next one. The Center Theater Update. Mr. Gore, if you would, Mr. Grant, you have a presentation for us? I know you have allotted fifteen minutes, but in the interest of everyone's time, we appreciate your efficiency. This is her. Thanks for coming tonight, too.
Thank you for having us. We've got quite a project going on, I can say it there. Uh, it's gonna be hugely beneficial to the city and surrounding areas. We've got a little PowerPoint that we put together, uh, and it kind of illustrates where we are, where we wanna go, and then I want to talk about how to begin. The first slide is just, it denotes the Monty Vale, myself, and Cheryl Hoplin, the commissioners, Kim Crabb, and the gentleman editor. Everybody knows Kim. Without Kim, the Center Theater wouldn't be able to do that period. It's eighty-nine years old, it's been passed a bunch, but we're fixing it. The next slide is just kind of a mission statement we put together. My, my commissioners don't agree with it, so we're gonna redo that, so I'm gonna discard that. It's, it's, it's not quite as, you know, specifically long, but this is an illustration. These illustrations are simply photos of what we've done today. And we're very embryonic. This is the roof, you have roof membrane, you can see it on the back of the big part of the theater. The little side and the upper side have not been completed at this time. This, uh, this project started in around middle of May and finished in July twenty-two. And I'll give a little more detail on that in a moment. The next slide is to show you why we identified imperials. The imperials are things we had to do before we could do anything else. Nothing else would matter if we didn't get these things done. Stopping the building from leaking was the primary. That's what the roof membrane and everything was all about. And you can see on this front wall, if you were to walk into the theater and turn around and look up, that's what you would see. A lot of the walls on the inside of the theater are limestone. The veiled force and the mortar joints were actually leaking and water was waiting into the walls of the theater. That's how bad it is, but that's all been fixed. And when we redo the inside, cosmetically, all that will be fixed as well. Any, anybody got any questions? Just interrupt me and we'll, we'll stop and I'll answer your questions if I can. If I can, I know Kim can. Uh, this is an illustration of the, uh, report of all the mortar joints on the outside of the building. This started in May of last year and finished, I think, Kim, they finished last week or this week?
To March.
To March, yes.
To March.
But anyway, this is, these are pictures of where they literally took every mortar joint out, put the mortar joints in, sealed them, and it waterproofed outside the building so water can't leak in. Uh, that was a very, very labor-intensive project and very expensive, but I'll show you some numbers. That ran into a pretty good-sized ticket. This is just another picture illustrating the same thing. These are, this was something leadership Harpsville did for us, raised a little bit, a little bit over seventy thousand dollars. These are bricks where you can memorialize or honor a person in your family or friend. Put it on a brick, we'll put it in the pavement, and it'll be there perpetually. So, that's a really good deal. I'm gonna do some for my grandkids. Kim's gonna do some for me, I think, right? Kim? But, uh, these are illustrations of just some checks we've gotten. Valley Foundation's gave us an half a million. We got five hundred thousand from the state twice. So, that was one point five million. We got twenty-five thousand from the Sunoco Foundation. Uh, we got seventy thousand from the Harpsville Leadership Group, and I think we got fifteen from the county and ten from the city so far as well. So, we raised a little over one point six million aggregate, you know, the whole total, so we've been shaped. This is an illustration of what inside the theater looks like right now. All the seats are gone. We've taken all the seats out, we've put new seats in. We found that to take the seats out, store them, and then try to reinstall them, we could almost buy new seats. We figured out a way to do that. Kim and I sat down and looked at the numbers one night. We're, our seating capacity now is eight fifty-three. By going to nine hundred seats, it makes us the fifth largest arena of its type in the state. We compete with the Alabama Theater, the Beach, the Charleston, the Columbia, the Green. But now, we're getting up to the level where the big boys play. Those forty-seven seats, thinking that doesn't sound like a lot, but those forty-seven seats selling out at a hundred and thirteen times the rate of playing every seat in the house, at sixty-two dollars a seat, ticket sales. So, the ROI on that is incredible. That's the old Sunoco thing, we had to do that to spend three hundred thousand. We've gotta have an ROI, we wouldn't get it. But those forty-seven seats carries to the nine hundred of them, and it's also a place for you to see.
You say they should be the fifth largest in the state?
We'll be, we'll be the fifth largest in the state. This is just kind of a renovation timeline, and, and I spoke to the imperials earlier, eliminating the leak in the roof. That's first, we had to do that. Without that, nothing else mattered. Uh, in, in combination with that, we, we put some new doors on the side of the leak. We put a new heating and cooling system in, and we repaired and replaced electrical feed. Now, that was, that was kind of what we call a discover cost. We didn't anticipate that, that wasn't part of it. But all of the electrical feed wiring coming in from Duke, there was no insulation on it. It was all rotten and chafed away, so we had to replace all of that. And that was a big ticket, that was about a hundred and thirty-five thousand that we spent that we didn't anticipate, but we still had to do it, didn't we? Are there any questions about all this? We, this is just kind of a timeline of where we were, where we are today as I speak today. And the next slide will show you a little more detail. These are, these are the timelines of the things we've got to do. The roof and membrane was about six weeks and it was completed. The mortar replacement, that was eleven months, is now completed. Heating and cooling systems, about a week, we got that done. All, everything, and I'll show you on another chart, everything I'm showing here is done, it's been paid for, which is a good thing. Uh, heating and cooling system's been done, the electrical upgrade, uh, that was about a four-week project. Very labor-intensive, they had to pull new, new tracks of wiring off of the top of the building, that was a mess. Well, a very dangerous mess, I can't believe we didn't have a fire department either. Painting the theater, the theater's about a six to eight week job. We selected a contractor, it is, uh, line-striking out of Charleston.
Yes.
Kim identified those for us, and they'll be coming in, actually doing some work in college and in the industry, but they're gonna be starting on the inside of the theater. And we've got a group formed, Cheryl Hoplin is the commissioner. She selected and picked some people to be on her oversight committee of that stage, as they call them. I said decorating, and I was chastised, so let me tell you, there, these are, these are not decorators, these are oversight people. Anyway, all that being said, uh, I think it's Rhonda Coker, uh, Jennifer Marshall, Cheryl's on that committee, uh, Suzie Moore's on that committee, Janice on that committee, my wife was selected. Lars was because she didn't want me to do any color picking, so. She's a, she's a, she's kind of a chicken. But, uh, anyway, that's, that's where we are with that. The seating is, is sixteen weeks, this could take three months to get the seating made and get it here. We have another minimum, two weeks to install it. The lighting is about one to two weeks. We could have a state-of-the-art lighting and sound system, so if we wanna bring in big theater, then we can do it. We can have the capability to do it. Uh, we, we're putting an elevator in, and the reason for the elevator, and, and another part of the renovation I'll show you in just a moment is, we're gonna make this facility ADA compliant. It is not today, but it will be. And the elevator's gonna be really cool because we're gonna redo the ballroom upstairs, and you'll see a little foreplant out over there. And we're gonna make it caterer-friendly so you can get through, up and down through an elevator instead of trying to climb the stairs and that kind of thing. But in general, the interior renovation is gonna be done by North Industrial, and we're, we're projected six months to get that done. And we can't start that until you see the next slide, not this is complete. This is just a renovation summary about what we've done, where we've been so far. Anybody that needs all this, I can make copies available to them. If you see it highlighted in, or background in green there, that means it's been done and it's been paid for. You see the numbers that I, I can see it very clearly, I'll go back to my sheet right here, the reference for you. We had, uh... The first thing we did was obviously, we had the, uh, the, the, uh... The EBS, the report of all the joints, that's the big deal, that's over six hundred thousand dollars to stop all the mortar joints. Every mortar joint in that building, on both sides of it and the back, were literally taken out and replaced manually. So, that's, that's the cost intensity of that. Uh, there's an electrical issue, hundred and thirty-three thousand. Everything you see high in, in the dark green has been completely paid for. And so, all that expense so far is one point one six full B. So, we already spent close to being two hundred thousand on the project already. And we've got the outside of the building fixed, and we're ready to move inside. And if you look at these other numbers on the far left here, you see the painting in its entirety, we got a bid of a hundred and seven thousand five hundred. That's front to back, top to bottom, inside done. And all the inside walls are being repaired as part of that. And, and some of these bids, that was one of the better bids, we had one bid went up over quarter of a million. So, we're not trying to, we're trying to keep all the bids reasonably low, but we, we, we're assessing the quality of work that's got to be done, too. And at the same time, we're trying to keep as much of this local as we can. Uh, the next, next thing, that was the seating, that's the new seating. The new seats, the, those forty-seven seats, will be about eleven thousand dollars. And we, and I spoke earlier to the ROI man, so that, that's a solid move, that's a great move. Our new seats will run about two hundred and thirty thousand for the total, yeah, that's all nine hundred seats. Six hundred, you know, in the lower part, and then five, uh, three hundred in the back. Lighting upgrades will be twenty-six, twenty-seven thousand, and then the electrical sound system, that's another big part, that's another hundred and five. But that's to bring this theater up to, to the capability to do anything we wanna do. They wanna bring in an orchestra, we are fit, if they wanna do this, we can do that. We got the stage to accommodate this size production. Yeah, let me put you in perspective of what we're talking about. About six weeks ago, I think it was six weekends ago, Alabama Theater, they seat twenty-five hundred people. They do four shows a weekend. They brought in the Tams, the Temptations, and the Coasters. They sold out every seat. Five thousand seats at eighty dollars a seat one weekend. And obviously, we can't seat twenty-five hundred people, but I've got some numbers here, I've run some numbers on this stuff, and I'm gonna show you. We're right now, we're in a deficit right now of about one point three million. Based on our bank balance and what we've got yet to do, we're in a deficit of about one point three million. We've, we're forming a group called Friends of the Theater. Senator Laurie is kind of pushing this thing along. He's got a good catalyst, people working on it, and these people go out and supposedly get this money. If they don't, I've got a kind of, I have a Charleston, who do, they write grants and everything for a living. They, they specify they work specifically with historical buildings and properties for renovations. So, we've got several safety nets. So, if you're thinking about that as the city, if you want some input, anytime, don't hesitate, whatever. Uh, we can, we can take those, I spoke to Daniel about that a little bit earlier. But let me, let me give you some numbers here, I'll put together, I'm gonna tell you some. These are, anybody will buy into facts, or fact-based, everybody will buy into that. But nobody wants to deal a lot with supposition, but let me, let me give you this real quick. New Bay Opera House, they seat four hundred and twenty-six people. We seat nine hundred. They sell on an average, their seat sales, ticket price, ninety-six dollars and eighteen cents per ticket that goes through their door. They sell out forty thousand, nine hundred and seventy-two dollars on an average each event, and they've only got four hundred and twenty-six seats. We got nine hundred. They sell out events a hundred and fifty-one days per year. That's incredible, that means every, about every two days, they call an event, and they're generating forty-one thousand dollars on average. Let's put that in perspective a little bit for Harpsville and think. Harpsville Center Theater, we could seat nine hundred people, but I'm not really, I'm, I'm trying to be realistic, you say, we're not gonna sell out every night. But let's say we can do within twenty-five percent of what New Bay Opera House does. Listen to those numbers, if we sell out seventy-five percent, or six hundred and seventy-five seats for a really good event, we're gonna sell out, uh, seventy-two dollars and fourteen cents per seat, that's what a ticket will cost, if we go twenty-five percent below where they are. And they're a really good barometer because they've been highly successful. At six hundred and seventy-five seats, we'll sell out forty-eight thousand, six hundred and ninety-four dollars each event on an average. The annual of that is five point five million. Think about the accommodation tax money coming back to the city. That's pretty incredible. It kind of amplifies where we are, where we wanna go. Now, we figure out how we get there, we got to raise some more money to do it. But I don't think there's any question that it can be done. And my question to city council, if anybody can offer, why not? Why not? We got one of the top theater facilities in the, in the state. Why not bring it up today, polish the geometry, got it in the rough, and utilize it? That could be a, Harpsville's growing, this is the time to do it. Do I, anybody have any questions? Anybody want any of this, this material for a handout?
I would like that.
I'd like it.
I don't have an answer, but I'll get you.
You can, you can just email me.
Okay. I'll be glad to, I'll be glad to.
Then...
Yeah.
Then, does the inter, does the interior work on this include updating the dressing rooms?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, that's all part of this. We're actually taking, we're actually taking the men's restroom, as you walk in, it's on the right. We're moving it all to the left side with new restrooms aligned with the new ladies' restrooms. That makes the egress in and out of the building much, much better. We're considering concessions, we don't know how we're gonna do that yet, but we're considering.
I would say dressing rooms.
Yeah, they, they do, that's...
That's probably a dress in another phase. That's probably a dress in another phase.
Yeah.
We're just trying to get the building back open right now.
Now, in, in the future, talking about giving shows in, would the uh, building commission hire a, a manager to recruit those shows and advertise those things?
I'm working, I'm working on a business model right now, and it includes bringing in a marketing manager. Somebody that knows how to go out and book events and utilize the facility. That, that's a special skill set, everybody can't do that. You need somebody that knows the content and how to work with the agents and all of that. That's a lot of knowledge in that, you have to have somebody who really knows that. And that's a skill set for them, but that is part of the, absolutely. And because Kim is gonna retire, hopefully, not ever, but I know he's gonna go, I know he's gonna go at the end of this renovation. He's gonna stay with us till we get the renovation done. Yeah.
Do you have numbers for what the theater was doing before as far as events and number of nights with events and how, how those were selling?
Let me give you that, I, I did some research on that, and that's, that's a great question. I, I will tell you this, out of all the monies that came into the Center Theater in the last, say, three to five years, only fourteen percent has been from utilization. Rest of it comes from tax-based money that, that we get free. It's not been how to utilize, but it's not been in a position to be able to do that. But we're gonna turn that around, we're fixing to change that. You need, we need, we need seventy-five to ninety percent of every dollar we get to come from events. Because that's all positive and profitable monies. And we can do that, there's no reason in the world we can't do it. Yes, Murphy?
Two questions, uh, number one, when will the building be back open? Um, and number two, is there a plan to get back the events we've lost this year?
The second part of that, I mean...
Is there a plan to get back the events we've lost this year? Like, will there be an incentive to bring Little Miss South Carolina back here? Um, I know our business is...
We're not gonna be able to do it this year, I know.
Little Miss will be back next year.
Yeah. We're gonna be back, we can't do it this year. And as far as projecting a timeline, that's pretty, that's pretty hard because I, I, we've got the commission, as a commissioner, as chair of commission, I've made a policy. We're not gonna start anything until we got the money in our pocket to pay for it. We're not going into holding. And we're right now one point one million short of starting the renovation inside, which is the restrooms, the elevators and all of that. We got to have another million dollars before we can even start that, before you think about starting. Uh, so, the timeline is, that, that's a great question, Murphy, but I just, I can't answer that. As my wife told me one day, she says, you're not prophetic, and on good days, you're not intuitive, so I'm gonna leave it at that.
We, I think we have time for one more question.
Yes.
If I have one. Well, first I want to say thanks for coming and sharing tonight.
Thank you.
On one hand, I'm not jealous of you, you've got to work it out for you, but it's very exciting to see the progress you have made. Especially after so many years of that theater really not seeing the love that you're giving it.
Yeah.
It's very exciting for the theater and for Hartswell, and um, you really hit the nail on the head as far as the city's concerned, with accommodations and, and hospitality taxes.
Yeah.
That, those guests, the buyer tickets translate into heads and beds and cheeseburgers and mouse to, to reference the, uh, former mayor Pennington. But also, at those ticket prices, we're talking some stakes and some monsters too. So that's a big deal, and we uh, we, we recognize that. So it's exciting not only to see the theater being reborn and with a plan to make thrive and really show off what we've got, but for the returns that we'll see in the city that we can reinvest in our people, it's all very, very exciting. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Casey, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we've got two people on a public comment, um, Reverend Lou, you're first, and uh, Paul Elijah, I'm here for Gossipy and Parks, if you'd like. All right, we all come on up together.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Welcome, first of all.
Mr. Mayor, to the council, we're, we're glad to be here today on behalf of Gossipy and the Park.
I'm sorry, would you state your name and address for the record?
My name is Jim Blue. I'm from the city of Hartstone.
I'm Paul Elijah and glad to rest at, um, two thirteen, we're here because our program is...
Great, thank you so much.
Pastor Jim Blue.
Yes, we are, we are glad to be on behalf of Gossipy and the Park. You know, we've been around a long time, sixteen years, sharing good news about Jesus Christ throughout, singing our songs and different, um, artists coming even performing, and we give them a kick off on a major thing. And we want you to find, all of our city councils, please come out and, and bring your families and bring your friends and be a part of it. And um, we, we're here to represent the City of Hartswell, there with the Gossipy and the Park. This gallery's not feeling pretty good, good today, so we just here standing for her. So we're looking for, seeing all of us come out together, ask a family and have a great time eating songs and worshiping our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. Amen. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you so much, guys, and thanks, good to see you.
I just wanna say, uh, especially to the gentleman about the Center Theater, I would be so glad when it's open again because, um, right now we're doing shows, but we're having to do, um, we have a show at the Old Town Theater this weekend. And we're having to go to Atlanta and we're having to go everywhere else. And I'm looking forward to having to come back to the Center Theater.
Well, we're very proud of you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, what you ever do is a God sing.
I'm sure.
A mission dream.
Oh, yes, I have. That's what we're talking about, yeah. That's what we're talking about. All right, uh, thank you both very much for coming tonight, we appreciate it.
All right. All right, moving right along, it is your turn, Mr. Manager.
For a public comment.
That was all we had, yeah.
A joint comment.
Gotcha, I thought it was two. All right, uh, just two updates for you tonight, uh, budget workshop's gonna be Tuesday, April twenty-fifth, and non-mutual PM at the Edition, lunch will be provided for council, but of course, this is a typical one. So we're presenting that, the budget to you guys on the eighteen. So we have a whole budget narrative, the whole budget narrative, and then we'll have time for conference.
We are excited.
We're very excited.
You're excited.
This is a fun time for us. April twenty-fifth, nine AM to two PM at the Edition.
All right.
Open to the public, please go. Uh, and then lastly, um, Recreation Football Eastern District Championship, King Bank, I saw Pastor Ray Taylor there, how you doing? Uh, that's gonna be Saturday, April fifteenth at three PM. It's been moved now to Long Park.
Yeah.
We're gonna have a banquet there, so that is recognized, do you wanna say anything about that?
I talked to you before.
If you don't mind.
How's everybody doing?
I'm happy, I'm here.
I'm Pastor Ray Taylor, King of Bill's Works Center right in Hartsville. Uh, we wanna recognize our boys and they won the district championship, many of y'all don't even know that. They won the district championship, went to state championship, we lost by two points. But we wanna recognize them, um, the same, it should have been already done, but at the same time, we thank God that he allowed us opportunity to do it. We wanted about all of y'all to come, it'll be Saturday at Long Park, at three o'clock.
At the end of the building, I want.
Yeah, so I appreciate it.
Yeah, I look for it already. And like you said, it may be a little late, but we still, we still do it.
Well, I'm gonna say what you told me to say this year. That's it, okay. Well, um, moving on to the Senate agenda, which we will just breeze on back to unfinished business. Um, Mr. Manager, if you would publish the uh, final reading of ordinance four-four-four-nine for the record.
All right, this is the public hearing and final reading of our ordinance four-four-four-nine, and authorizing the director of the City Parceval to enter into an intergovernmental agreement related to South Carolina local revenue services. To participate in one or more local service programs, revenue service programs, to execute and deliver one or more participant program supplements, and other matters should be included too.
All right, thank you very much. Um, I would hear a motion, oh, public hearing, I'm sorry. Um, I'll open up for a public hearing, if anyone would like to speak on the final reading of ordinance four-four-four-nine, please come forward, state your name, address for the record and keep your comments to two minutes or less. Seeing no one, uh, the public hearing is now closed. And now, thank you, Mayor, for attention, I will hear a motion to approve the final reading of ordinance four-four-four-nine. So move second. Got a motion in the second. Um, all those in favor, is there any discussion, any comments or questions about this order?
I would say this is really important for the city, this one, and one thing I do wanna commend and I see all this is that they can reduce the fees that they take out of this and they pack it actually, and we, it all will come right back in two months, so they actually reduce and pack their leads.
Right, I'll listen to that.
Right, I, that's the first time I got a letter, where it was saying, I'll give more money if there's some less, so. Thankful that they did that for it.
I didn't ask for any additional revenue fund outs, this is worth it, because they're remaining off here, so.
Can you follow up some now? Thank you. All right, well, hearing no other comments or questions, um, I'll take it to a hug. All those in favor of approving the final reading of ordinance four-four-four-nine, please indicate yourself by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ladies and gentlemen, the ayes have it. Ordinance four-four-four-nine has been approved. Moving on to the public hearing and final reading of ordinance forty-four fifty. Mr. Manager, if you would do your thing.
Yes, sir, it's approved in the adoption of six senior members of district, the district we found in the City of Hartswell, such time provided for council members to be elected in each district and in the method of election.
All right. Um, I'll open up a public hearing on ordinance forty-four fifty. If anyone would like to come forward for comment, uh, please state your name and address for the record and keep your comments to two minutes or less. Anybody?
I don't know what that mean, what that means, I mean, is it, uh, the re-...
It, um, the maps or the law, there are three, four small changes where a few lots moved from one district to another. And it's all meant to balance the balance as the city has grown since the last, since some districts have gotten out, they're supposed to be the same size as far as the number constitutes in each district, and there's some other criteria too. So this is each census, we, we do a, a rebalancing of the districts and try to minimize the amount of change we can still meet the requirements that we have from the state to keep everything fair, that's what it is, long and short.
Okay, and the election process, is it gonna be the same because I'm seeing here the method of election?
Right. That's the same now, for a few individuals, the polling place will change, with their district will change. Um, but the election process, it is, um, not being changed as part of this process, correct? Um, that's where, that's fair, they're...
In any districts that do change, you'll be getting new voter registrations from the voter registration office?
Yep, uh, the, the, the office will be over communicating about changes, make sure everybody understands what they, understands what they mean, where they need to go vote. Um, any other? Okay, well, I hear about close the public hearing for ordinance forty-four fifty. Uh, I would hear a motion to approve the final reading of ordinance forty-four fifty. Have a motion in a couple of seconds, you got that, Matt, where? All right, um, any discussion on this? Everybody's good with the, the new maps? All right, well, I'll hear a vote, and all those in favor of approving the final reading of ordinance forty-four fifty, please indicate yourself by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ladies and gentlemen, the ayes have it, the ordinance forty-four fifty has been approved. Moving on to new business, first reading of ordinance forty-four fifty-one, Mr. Manager, if you would...
Yes, sir, it's second. Ordinance to lease the property at one forty-nine West Carolina Avenue to Dr. and Kathy Maitisakis.
Okay. Um, I would hear a motion, well, and just to say, playing a motion, this is a renewal of a longstanding agreement that we have, Maitisakis for their retail store. Um, just, just down that way, past my scenes.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion, we pass the ordinance four-four-five.
Thanks, very much. Have a motion in the second for ordinance forty-four fifty-one. All those in favor of approving the first reading of ordinance forty-four fifty-one, please indicate yourself by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Did you, you...
Uh, not from first reading, yeah, but thank you, I always need the help. Um, did, did, we, I have a, the ayes have that one? So we're good, okay. Ordinance forty-four fifty-one has been approved for past first reading. And finally, on new business, resolution oh-four twenty-three oh-one, Mr. Manager, please.
Yes, sir, it's pledging the practice of inclusibility in the City of Hartswell.
All right, this has been a long time coming, we've all been talking about this. Um, this is an initiative from the Municipal Association of South Carolina. Um, like, as you can see, for, the local municipalities to join together and focus on stability and government working together as a top priority. So if you would, uh, council members, if we could stand and recite this pledge in the piece of paper in front of us? If I got it, I'll start us off. I pledge to build a stronger and more prosperous community by advocating, advocating for civil occasion, respecting others and their viewpoints, and finding solutions for the betterment of my city and my town. Thank you all so much. We, we were going to ceremoniously sign the resolution individually, but in the interest of time, we go ahead, we did that already, so you didn't have to wait notice. So thanks, everyone. Um, yes, ma'am.
Well, we have these things up here for each council meeting.
I don't know, it's been discussed.
Mr. Mayor, any motion?
Yeah, motion. Uh, I would hear a motion.
I so moved that we approve resolution dash zero-four dash two-three dash zero-one.
That's fair.
All right, thank you for the motion, seconds, first time doing that, uh, obviously missed a step. Um, so we have a, a motion to approve resolution of four twenty-three oh-one. Do we have, uh, we have a second, do we have any comment or discussion on this?
Yes.
Thank you.
I want to know if we will be making this pledge each meeting.
I think this worth discussing, um, you would like to?
I would like to.
Okay, can we put that on, uh, on the next agenda or just? Yeah, well, I think we, we have requests that we, we can work through that and decide if we is not able to, to make that a part of our everyday meeting.
And that way, it will remind council of why we're here. And it will also let the public know that we expect the same respect from them as well.
Absolutely, very good point. And thank you for bringing that up, thank you for correcting me on the, uh, rules of order here. Um, so we have ready for that again. All right, all those in favor of approving resolution oh-four twenty-three oh-one, please indicate yourself by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous, the ayes have it, resolution oh-four twenty-three oh-one has been approved. And thank you very much again for your, your help with that. And that brings us into executive session, which I need to read verbatim. Um, I would hear a motion to enter executive session pursuant to South Carolina Code of Affairs Section thirty dash four dash seventy A one-two for discussion of matters related to city judge and city attorney and the city manager's performance review.
Mr. Mayor, so moved.
Thank you.
Second.
I have a motion in the second, Mr. County Clerk, you get that. All right, um, any discussion? Hearing none, we have a vote to enter, um, executive session, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Ladies and gentlemen, we now stand in executive session, thank you much, so much, my...